Maybe it's the one she's been looking for.
Can't get used to that here.
No.
Before it was cool down here. Now it's gone.
It's still cold.
Huh? Still cold. Okay, Charlie. Eddie?
Okay. Couldn't find any documentation that there was a public road council board that showed it all the way through. I'd like for you to listen to this tape. I could already listen to it after the meeting.
You want me to listen to it after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yo, I tried to get some information from this 2019 meeting one. I couldn't get any. They refused to let me in. I gave you all a letter. Let me look at the Davis books and they refused to. Under sunshine law, you cannot do that. That's why. And so I'm gonna have to get a hold of somebody on our hire. I want you to listen to this.
Okay.
And it'll verify exactly that road is a public road. So whatever Jim thinks, I don't care. I just don't care what people believe on paperwork. People kind of want facts. Here's facts. And I can get more of these plat books. If you said the only thing you could find was 1958. That's what Dennis said.
Along with a couple, you know, other years, but yeah.
So when my dad moved down there in the early seventies, I was in the service overseas. When I come back, he'd argue from then. But this happened with those couple whistles and they found the paperwork. Somewhere in this courthouse, it shows it is a public road. These guys is verifying that 2019. Hey, it's not right. You gotta have proof. They didn't have it. Somewhere in that this county, would you let me look in the basement? See if there's where it's at? They said they put everything on microfiche.
Right.
All the paperwork.
Who said what, where, what paperwork? I mean, what office? Because we all keep our own records.
Yeah, which office did you go to?
My cousin found out that this, they went to find about a wheel. And they told them that they're putting everything on microfiche. So you gotta find out where that.
I have your recorder though.
Wheels, wheels would not be in the recorder's office. The circuit clerk handles wheels if there is any. I mean, I'm sure I won't read their ones. No, they're not just gonna let somebody come go through their records. Their records are closed. But you can go to the circuit clerk's office and ask them how to look. There's, I'm sure there's a process.
Yeah. See, I wasn't sure what process was.
I don't know.
So what about the county commissioner paperwork when Don Bullock was in office?
That would be in our office and Charlie, we have looked and looked and looked in the minutes and can't find anything regarding. I mean, Dennis spent two days.
Just like you said on this, uh, these plat books, you spend all that time and you only found one that showed it closed. Well, you gotta go to more than just one place. I went to the museum. Cousins went over there at the library and they found these. You can't, they're scattered all over this county. And the only proof is somewhere paperwork is here in this courthouse. Along with the township road board out there. I should be allowed to look at their books. Hopefully that Ted won't be reelected. He needs to get off there and waste it he's doing.
I can only speak for documents in our office. I can only speak for documents in the county clerk's office.
Right.
I can't speak for anybody else.
And you do the county commissioners many meetings?
Mm-hmm.
And you got, when Bullock was in office?
Mm-hmm.
What years and stuff? Well, they couldn't tell me before. But I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying, I'm trying to get this. Where it's a county road and if you'll listen to this tape and verify case.
I'll listen to it after the, the meeting.
Okay. But what about the sunshine law? You all still gonna stay with that?
I don't under.
That's between you, wait, I don't wanna be speaking out of turn. Yeah.
Not us.
That's between you and the township.
It was county commissioner.
What?
What did you sunshine request from the county commission, Charlie?
See the book, David Township.
We don't have.
We don't have those.
I'm saying it came, it came to him too. But.
That's still between you and the township.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully it'll change and then.
We don't have township records.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds great. Thank you, Charlie.
Alright, you got.
I think, uh, I think they're right outside the door, Kelly.
Come in, Brian. Thank you. I just got called to house on the prayer.
Yeah, okay.
Right up my alley. I'm in my grandma era.
Yes, I love it though. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Is it up? Is it working?
You're up. You're up, Gals, you're up.
The happy office. Actually officially met, but I'm the reporter. This is Abby. I was gonna say Manuel, but it's waggling now. She's my, one of my deputies, so.
It's nice to meet you guys.
We're here about our first floor bathroom. I know this is not big on your list because you have so much on your plate, but. And Jim, you know, I've talked to you all before and if this isn't your wheelhouse, we'll take it to whoever's wheelhouse you think it is.
You say first floor bathroom?
Bathroom. Yep.
You wanna hear it?
We'll hear it.
Okay. Well, we have two restrooms on the first floor. And up until the remodel, we had an employee only bathroom and it was locked. So people couldn't get in that weren't employees of the courthouse.
As in each office has their own key to access the bathroom.
It was locked from the outside. So since the remodel, it's not locked from the outside. It just says employees only on it. And we've been having issues with that. So we're here about that and this Abby is having. She's been involved in most of them, so that's why she's here to tell you about it. So I'll let her tell you about it.
So first, I don't like public speaking, so if I stumble over my words, I apologize. I've only ever been in here one other time.
Don't feel bad.
And that was another issue.
I'm saying.
So, um, it's. You're losing my words already. Um, the bathroom, it used to be in a women's only employee bathroom for at least 20 years. I've talked to other employees of the courthouse that have worked here for 20 plus years and it was a locked employee bathroom. Up until this fall, um, we weren't really even notified it was going to be a public bathroom. Um, I, I feel like I fought a little bit for it for, with, um, Mr. Watson and Mr. Stone. Um, I think we compromised on the sign. The sign isn't doing much. Um, I have went into that restroom on multiple occasions and it has been absolutely trashed. And I know it has no fault to our maintenance department. They are wonderful here. And I know that bathroom gets cleaned every single day.
More than once probably.
Yes, but, um, the day that it really made me irate was when Jim Stone was actually in Watson's office that morning. It was nine thirty. I went to use the restroom like a lady and the door was open, light was on. The toilet seat was up. There was pee all over the toilet seat and all over the floor. And there was toilet paper and paper towels scattered everywhere. Someone just went in there and just trashed it.
Not an employee.
No.
We are not blaming employees and we are not blaming our mainline staff because they are wonderful.
They really are. Um, and I had, as soon as I saw, I went over to Rick Watson's office. Mr. Watson was not there at that moment. It was Jim Stone. Which you got probably, aside of me, probably didn't wanna see it. And for that, I apologize.
I went over there and picked it up.
Yes, you went and picked it up, but as an accounting employee, that's not my job. I should have a sanitary bathroom to be able to use. Um, I am fine with sharing it with the men of the courthouse. I don't have any qualms with that. I feel like they were all raised right, know how to put toilet seat down, um, clean up after themselves.
Fast.
I don't, yes. I don't need to clean up after the boys in my own home. I have a son and a husband and they know the rules. So if I won't do it for my own blood, I'm not gonna do it for just every person on the side that comes into the courthouse. I am just.
I don't blame you, by the way.
I'm just asking for an outside lock. It can be a keypad, it can be anything, it can be a key. Now, I understand the whole jury selection that you have raised before. I am personally, now this is just me saying this because I haven't talked to everybody else. I'm personally okay with that bathroom being open to the public on jury selection days. Every other day, like once the juries is selected, they have their own bathroom in courtroom. The second floor circuit clerk has their own bathroom as well. Now, I know it's not accessible to the public, but it's still there. Downstairs, there's two stalls.
In the women's side.
On the women's side, so.
You all probably haven't been in there or seen that.
I try to stay out of that.
So there's other resources there. Now, I, I completely understand the argument for jury selection. But jury selection is only, I don't know, 10 days a year and I'm still here for the 340 days left. And I'm here every single day.
Would a keypad work out best or would?
It does, it, yes. I think so because then you can give the code to the employees. And I understand the prosecutor's office also doesn't have an employee restroom. Totally fine with them having that too. But there's also 13 women on that first floor. 13 women, there's a handful of men, and I've already explained to them, like, if I ever see that bathroom, like, I'm gonna hunch down, you're gonna clean up after yourself. Because of the men. I mean, I mean, they're nice gentlemen. I don't have any problems with sharing bathroom with gentlemen. It's the fact that it's the public and it's not just that they don't clean up after themselves. People smoke in those bathrooms all the time. And I hate going into those bathrooms and smelling that. It's atrocious. It is.
Cause there's no vent.
There's no vent, there's no fan, there's no nothing. And so.
How many bathrooms are in this courthouse?
I don't know how many's upstairs. I do know there's one in the jurors.
Yeah, the jurors have one. There's one in the judges' chambers.
Judges got one. Literally, how many public bathrooms are in this courthouse?
Every floor has.
Five.
Every floor has.
Well, not the third floor.
Five women's stalls that I know of, two in the basement, two up here, one downs in the first floor. And then I'm not sure about the third floor. I've only ever been there.
So there's just, there are five in the basement?
Bathroom doesn't have a public bathroom.
No, there's two.
The third floor doesn't have a public bathroom.
Two stalls.
But there is one in the jurors.
With the stalls in consideration with the downstairs one, there's been multiple occasions where I've gone downstairs because the first one has been trashed. The problem with that is, is that probation and parole is down there and when they have to do drug tests for their people. Just because it's a two-stall bathroom, they still have to lock that door.
Yeah.
So that one stall is still open while there's a line outside for the people who are doing that, which I ran into multiple times as well.
I'm per, myself, I'm perfectly fine putting a keypad on the door. Uh, was there any other issues behind that other than the jury selection? None?
Not that I'm aware of.
Keypad would be wonderful.
It really would.
I say, did the key, was the key an issue last time?
No.
No, everybody had their own key.
Everybody had their own key. We were, I had no idea why it changed.
I still grab my key to go to the bathroom once. I've been so trained to grab that key to go to the bathroom. We haven't had it for months and I still grab it to go to the bathroom.
What do you think, Charlie?
I, I, yeah, I think you guys need a keypad, key, whatever's gonna make it easier.
I honestly see it as important. I didn't realize there was a bathroom behind the door. I didn't look.
No, that was our plan, but.
We were able to get a sign, but we, I, I'm not.
As soon as word gets out that there's a bathroom behind that door, people's gonna, people start using it, so.
And they do.
The big thing is on jury selection, it's like, yesterday, I forgot.
And we opened it yesterday.
It was 600 and we did 97 people.
It was open to the public yesterday.
So with the keypad?
Yeah.
Do they gotta put in the code?
Open it up.
Leave it open.
You can open it.
Yes.
I was gonna say, everyone have real familiar.
Totally understand that, which it was left open yesterday.
That was my big concern. I, I know about jury trials.
Yeah, but how many jury trials do we have here, Jim, compared to how many days we're.
See, I was on jury duty.
We also have more bathrooms available to the police.
Cause we made two up here.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
But I have your eyes on jury duty. Everybody got to use the restroom.
Yeah.
If there wasn't an issue, so.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion for this or just?
No. We'll let Chris know.
Okay.
Um, to get a keypad, um, if that's what we're gonna do is a keypad that.
As long as everybody feels fine with the keypad.
I don't see why they wouldn't as long as they remember their code. I mean, I'll write it down and give it to them and then they can remember the code if they don't.
Don't post it on the door.
Don't post it on the door, no.
How about Abby's number? If you lock it out, call Abby.
Yeah.
Grab a girl.
But I mean, even this morning, we had a small incident. I went to the restroom right when I got to work and there was paper towels over the floor and there was gum on the floor and some. And I know it's, like I said, it's not our main people. They're fantastic. They do whatever needs to be done.
There's lots of extras here too.
Yes. And then old glory days, when that gets here, then you get the road.
I didn't think about that.
You have a lot of people.
People just coming in here to use the staff.
And a lot of them come in and go to the bathroom.
Think they will now with the.
That's what I was just thinking with the security. I can't imagine.
I was gonna say, this is open during old glory days?
Well, it used to be because we were office hours, we would, all our doors were open during the day.
Now, it'd be.
I didn't think about that either.
On door and that's it. And that's gonna, that's gonna change your guard.
That is. I hadn't thought about that.
Because when no glory days hits, a part of them, they can't fill up with stuff because of the. I don't care if they have any trials going on and.
Yeah, you guys are gonna have to address that.
Still has a juvenile court.
See, I was set up.
They used to have, uh, office gates out there on the. Didn't they?
Yeah.
The office.
Office Olympics, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
I've participated.
Thank you all for your time.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
We got pride in you.
We'll get Mr. Lorsick to order a lock.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
He may have one.
Say he might.
If he does. I asked for one already.
Not a bad idea. Thank you. Right. As far as agenda goes, that's everything. So. We got anything else to talk about? You're gonna give me just a minute.
Okay, go ahead. But I do have a little bit of something to talk about.
Do you need? I'll ask you a second.
The road and bridge, we closed the job opening. We closed that on Friday.
Yep, yep.
Um, Dennis came in yesterday and went through all the.
Are you Mr. Larson?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just wanted to talk to you about, it's not, it's not related to the county commission. I think you went to high school with my late husband, Kevin Griffith.
Yes, I did.
And I was just wondering, God, here I go again. He passed away a couple of years ago, but. I was, I remembered your name, like, he would talk about stuff with school and everything and I remember your name coming up and then I saw it down here for commission. And then I clicked on your thing and I was like, that's the same guy. So I was just wondering if you, if you had any like stories you could share or anything like that.
He probably wouldn't wanna hear them.
Oh, I, I, believe me, I was buried with the man for 25 years. I know what he was like.
Yeah, yeah, he, uh, I think you remember Greg, what I told him?
I remember hearing that name too.
Greg and him are very close.
I'll start with you. Dennis and I went through the applications and we kinda sorted the, from the maybes. Um, and he would like you guys to look at those.
Like center door.
Yeah, the maybes.
Well, you can look at both, just in case, you know, somebody. Here's the name tag. And he would like for you to look at them.
You get caught after 11 and everybody's going around with a direction. Kevin was a good man, I would say that.
He really was.
Kevin was a very good man. He's a lot of fun. I know that.
Yeah, we have two boys. They're 28 and 22. The 22 year old's an independent police officer.
Yep.
And he looks just like Kevin.
Much copying his photograph.
If I could pull it, if I could.
Your file.
I have to copy it and mail him a signed copy and then, um.
Do you mail a picture of the map too?
I do.
Oh, perfect. So then we've got.
But yeah, Kevin Telt went downhill, you know. The last few years, you know, he, he had, about 10 years ago, he got pneumonia and, you know, had some, had sepsis and it just, had some lasting effect.
After they've done it.
And so he did have a hard time, but, you know.
And I put the original.
He worked a yellow freight, you know, we just, we had a great life for a long time.
How, how do we know what's under the reputation for?
I mean, they're meeting all these until they get down to the four team where special projects, we don't.
With prior approval from county commission, so they're not allowed to do our special project until they.
That's how we decide this.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have to come to you and say, look, we have the cart.
Well, there's a picture. I took him in my Red Rocks. That's set a long time ago, but.
Undermine for him.
Okay.
Ask to have prior approval.
So that's the spec, that's how I understood, but I'll make sure.
I know you're busy in here and everything. I just thought, you know. Now, you might have a few stories. So, so you guys played ball over the O'Clough.
Yeah.
Whatever their project is, they'll just.
He talked about Greg a lot. He said he was a really good baseball player and that he had the opportunity to go further, but I guess he, you know, wanted to go another way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't Greg pitch a no hitter or something like that?
Wouldn't surprise me.
Did you lose it?
But I'm down here a lot because we moved to Harrisonville 20 years ago and I worked with public defender's office. And so I'm down here in Henry County like weekly. Two or three times a week.
Application.
Yeah.
We'll have to interview him.
But yeah, it's been alive.
Yeah, oh yeah.
But, but I, I just, I recognized your name and I wanted to say hi.
I appreciate you stopping by.
I'm sure I'll see you around here. I'm.
I'm gonna be here for a while.
Yeah, me too. It was nice talking to you.
Yep, take care.
I think that's another application.
What I had was the road and bridge applications and one of you guys.
Oh, where he's.
I also have a no pile if you wanna see the no pile.
What if he has an address here, tell, something reserved, it says.
Seen right there for a while. I was updating mine about every six months.
Don't they need a Class A? Didn't you say they wanted it?
He wanted them to have a CDL.
They gotta have a CDL. We'd rather have them CDL. There's one that got a Class E which is commercializes. That'd kinda really let them be part of it. They'll need at least that.
I was thinking we had like 15 total applicants and I could count on less, on one hand, how many had CDL.
So my.
Not very many of them had CDLs, so.
No, there isn't any. I've seen so far.
No, this one does.
Yeah, I think there was two. There was a couple.
He went down there in Stratford.
This guy should have.
I was gonna say, he drove a dawn.
What is a CDL?
He on the bike.
Oh wait, up there to top. C1 driving skill Stratford reserve. This one had to have at least a B. He had to have at least a B.
That's what I was guessing with this one.
Yeah, yeah, for two tracks, that's, that's a B license. Yeah. Yeah, probably.
Finish your rest, Charlie.
I got the nose if you wanna, if you wanna take a P at the enders with the nose. It's gonna be your stack.
Kelly, can I, can you make me a copy of what, I think it was Fields Creek, Stephen had brought in? The road they were gonna do.
For the cart?
Yeah, I just, all I need is the map, part of it.
Is it Honey Creek?
Yeah, yeah. I guess he's done already.
Johnny on the spot.
Yeah, that pretty quick. Hmm.
Did you wanna see the no pile? There you go.
This one actually looks pretty good, this one actually looks pretty good.
Which one?
That's Juggins mine.
Oh, this one, that's it, I'll just plug that.
Dennis is gonna wanna set up interviews, I'm with the ones that you guys choose, I'm just asking you not to set up interviews for Tuesday the eighth. Um, Tuesday the eighth, I only have two people in my office now, and um, if we can just, I'm gonna try not to give us a heavy schedule on Tuesday the eighth up here.
Have you been, been that out looking for somebody?
I have been thinking about looking for somebody, but the challenge is hiring somebody and saying, I can't guarantee you a job for this long, cause who knows what the governor's gonna do.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but you.
That's a challenge.
Bad things, you don't wanna wait till six, eight months down the road.
Well, I wouldn't wait that long.
I hope, I hope.
I can't.
Right away. Wonder what he's waiting on to make the decision?
I don't know, I, I talked to the secretary of state's office yesterday, cause he was changing over stuff there, and um, she said that there are actually two county clerk appointments still sitting on his desk. But it would have been Carson's best last, from last year that haven't been made yet.
Hmm, really?
Yeah. But he's made Cass counties and Pettis counties this year, so you know, I, I don't know what's, what holds one up, or I, I don't know. But she, she, the lady at the state, she was like, just don't take it personal, it was like, I'm, I'm not. She said there's no rhyme or reason sometimes.
This one was kinda strange.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I figured, I, I'll sort that one before.
See, I haven't seen that.
You see this one?
I think I will use indeed when I put that job out there, Dennis got quite a few hits in the school as well.
Better than just throwing it out there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, I mean, I think I saved my cost of publishing and just put it on it, indeed.
It was CDL though. Shut up.
Well, probably. I don't know whether we can get all of them in one day to do it.
And you, you wouldn't in the morning, I mean, you'd have to plan in afternoon and do all the interviews in an afternoon. I think, I think I would try to do all, if Dennis had the ability, rather than taking him off the road two days, you know, for half a day, just do it in one afternoon.
Yeah.
Do you wanna see the no pile Jake, ask the others?
I would mind looking at it.
So he's getting two or three, he's wanting to hire two or three.
Two, right now, I think that's what I know of.
We need to get a new one of these.
Um, I thought you guys did that at the beginning of the year.
We did.
I thought you did.
We did.
This week, and I talked about it, yeah, I'm sick of you guys already did that.
Yeah.
Should be somewhere, isn't it?
That one's just because that's the one that they had.
That's one, yeah.
Yeah. I was pretty sure you guys did that at the beginning of the year.
We need to put that in our deal. Okay.
I think Jake and I were talking Jim, what, what, how often and when do they do the inventory, I, I spend. I can't remember when, when you and I went over that, page by page. The last inventory list that we have is in twenty twenty one. Do they update that list yearly, or?
They, we went through, in fact, when we was moving, I thought, uh, more, or, now you talking about work, from bridge.
I'm talking about the road inventory that MODOC sends us that we say, oh, it's not on our road inventory.
That is the last one I think I remember. Twenty, well, no, we updated it because of airport route, see, we put that in there.
So does it only update when you change a route, so, say, say we have not changed anything since twenty twenty one, then that would be the most updated list, they don't like give one out every year?
No. Then we're, same, just like over there when uh, they measured that road there here, around there.
Well, I know, we've had changes since twenty twenty one.
Yeah, and they've changed, but I think all that should be there somewhere.
But that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, where is the latest version of our road inventory, and if, if it's not here, who do I go to to get it from?
Yeah, but I think.
Because twenty twenty one is the last version I have.
Cause we, we know, we put all that down in the minutes. And I don't know what we're.
Well, Wicks, twenty twenty one is the last version he has as well. We don't produce the road inventory document, that's given to us by, is it MODOC?
Yeah, and usually, I think a lot of us change whenever they come.
I just wanna make sure we have the most up to date information.
Yeah, because see, that's how you get a cart rock and all the test tests, and, and we've added, I, I thought Rick sends that in somewhere. Is there somebody you can call?
Rick was asking.
I asked Rick, I already asked Rick.
Okay.
I'm, 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 I wanna know, who do I, who, where does that document come from, and I'll get a hold of myself.
It'll go down, it'll go down the spring hill, where it goes, right now, it's.
The last lady I worked with, was um, Julie.
Yeah, uh, it was you and I.
Ziber, Ziber. When I did the maps.
See Frank Miller, and he's gonna be leaving, and.
I didn't have anything to do with the final project, product, I just did the legwork. Brittany what?
That's our new uh, uh, that's who handles it, so right now, down there, Brittany, Brittany Mitchell.
You got her number?
Uh, yeah.
Maybe she can.
Four one seven, three four zero, six four six eight.
I was just thinking that list is almost five years old.
Like, she's, and she's on maternity leave, that's what I called.
I, I can email her.
She was saying she had a little one.
She was gonna have a baby.
Uh-huh, I think she was, but I'd call her.
It's fine, no, I can email her, that's not a problem, if she's on maternity leave, an email probably would be better. I just didn't know who to go to to ask.
Seeing Zach, who is the new guy up there, you remember, weren't Zach that was out there? Having to, he, uh, Zach, wasn't it Zach?
I think it's Zach.
Zach was one of them, and I, he just came in, that's, he was the first day.
Yeah, he was taking over for that one lady.
Yeah, and they change some way, but how many people they have to be.
Can imagine.
Just like Brittany, she was, that handle was before her, hell, I didn't, I got her, and I changed the order of Brittany, and she's, like I said, she's on maternity leave, I'm not pretty sure.
Yeah.
I remember right.
Yeah, she was.
Most of six weeks, so it's been about a month, and she's, she would have already had a little one.
Well, I would like to upload a, a current road inventory on our team, so that you have a, wherever.
Really, oh, it'd be really, really handy.
Yep.
I don't know, see Frank Miller, and then he, he was, he was going for something else, or he, I don't know that.
I'm not sure.
Talking about, cause they had a complete change. I know Brittany, see, we talked to her, must talk to her.
That's fine, I'll find her contact information and I'll get a hold of her, I'll probably just email her since she's on, it's not like a life or death thing, I can, it's, I'm, I'm just curious.
Wanna see the no pile?
Saying no.
Uh-huh.
Saying no, but.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Did you see any?
I haven't seen any names I recognize.
Lot of work for us.
So are you guys, when Dennis asked me later, do we wanna set up a date and time for interviews? I mean, he's getting ready to get into his nice weather, he's gonna need to hire somebody.
Yeah, whenever uh, he wants.
Okay, I will talk to Dennis, are you guys good with an afternoon, like come, go to lunch, come back, um, that way you just dedicate that to? Are you okay with an afternoon Jim?
Yeah, should be.
Okay, it won't be the eighth? I'm guessing it'll be maybe like next Thursday or something.
Um, next Thursday won't work for me.
Next Thursday won't work for you, okay, I don't have.
Cause I'll leave after commissioning you.
Um.
Cause I'll be gone.
So are we, you just wanna focus on Tuesdays or Thursdays, or do you wanna? Anything in particular, you wanna talk to Dennis and find out first?
Let me talk to Dennis and find out at how quick he's wanting this done, um, I mean, we can do it the eighth, but it's gonna be.
That's a busy day for you.
Yeah, it is, with only two people in the office.
That's a election day, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, I'd say that would be a day not to.
The seventh wouldn't work.
The eleventh won't work for me because I've got certification. I mean, I don't have to sit in on it.
Does it have to be a Tuesday or Thursday?
It doesn't.
I'm just making whatever's convenient for you.
Well, we'll find out from Dennis and see, the, well, all next week's not gonna be great for me. Ooh, state of Missouri, I'm going to answer this call.
Get it.
Hello.
Hope that's the call she's looking for. Next week, well, it really don't work very well, next week doesn't exactly work well for me either.
And then when you get out to next week, that's not gonna work.
Then I'll make whatever work, whatever they need. Say I don't have anything else. Well, we have to next Monday, but. Next Monday, I can't do it. Field trip, littlest one.
Little one?
Yeah. Jeff City, Golden Capital.
Oh, they're gonna love that.
Yeah. See, a few years ago, we went with Carter, so kinda gotta go with Dawson.
Take him in to see Rick. Rick.
Oh, yeah.
Gotta see Rick, he'll give him great tour. He's a good guy. Or actually even Danny Hoskins.
Is he up there?
Yeah, he's there.
See, I think they're all in session right now.
Yeah, they're getting ready to go.
Yeah, we was, last time we got on the, one of our final days, and they was back and forth about chickens and laying eggs. Didn't quite understand all that, but that's okay.
Bathroom's all full. We may wanna ask, think of asking Dennis to talk to, pick out two or three, cut it down, gonna have him submit, just let him cut a lot of matter.
So you guys were good, not just a Tuesday or Thursday?
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, what? What do y'all think about asking Dennis to do that?
What is there eight there?
There's only five, I think.
There's only five of the.
There's only five, yes, or babies, yeah, there's only five babies.
I don't know, if they do them all, surely.
I agree.
Well, it wouldn't take, it's not gonna take that long.
No, I thought there was more than five.
Nope, there's only five.
It wouldn't take that long to do it.
Dennis's number six five five two is. Oh, yep, there it is.
But it wouldn't take long to run, I feel.
No, I don't think so.
Thirty minutes, you'd probably beat that.
I didn't miss that.
Right, yeah, cause I, I don't have much questions.
See Dennis has the ones.
Yeah, more than any of our questions.
Hey Dennis, it's Kelly. Hey, the commissioners looked over your, um.
Ask everybody.
Yeah, someone.
Applications, yes.
I don't know, yeah.
And wanna, wanna know when's good for you to do interviews.
Cut out thirty minutes and fine.
Anytime, um, so it wouldn't have to be like a Tuesday or Thursday?
I assume that we may not either, since.
Are you wanting to do them this week or next week?
I don't think we do it, but we'll check into it.
Okay.
I don't think we have to, just, of course.
They're looking at, they was looking, the eighth isn't good for me, obviously, but I don't have to set in.
Honestly, I'd wait till after the meeting, let them, everybody go, and then let them come in, one at a time, let them sit out there. Ten minutes, I guarantee ten minutes, you'll be done.
Yeah, I don't think we.
Eleventh isn't good for me.
There's not that many questions to ask, I mean Dennis.
Why don't we just set it up for like eleven, and we just run a little late after a meeting?
Do that, it's maybe what, it would be done, I don't care.
And that gives you.
You made it eleven, I did, hey, we're gonna be done early, we're done by.
Would that give you an opportunity enough time to like, have an interview?
I mean.
I mean, to me, that's just, I hate to say it, somebody just comes back to him. Yeah, well, that's. We need to know about. He, he's, he's gonna deal with them, so. That's right, not us.
He's saying the fourth or the tenth, do you have?
Ten, four.
And I'm checking schedules.
Tenth one, for me.
Jim says.
Unless we do it in the morning.
Him, unless you do it in the morning.
If you wanna do it in the morning, we can, we can go at light schedule.
You can do it.
You wanna try, maybe do something like for an hour from eleven to twelve for interviews?
Yeah, that way we'll be done, that way if we do, get out and we're done.
Well, there's, they, the, the same five that you had.
I said, just Monday.
They just left in that pile, so I guess you're the ultimate decision on how many of these you actually wanna interview. And we'll set it for eleven o'clock on Thursday, the tenth for interviews, does that work?
One place or the other.
Okay, sounds good, and then when you come in, look at these and see if. Okay, sounds good. And then when you come in, look at these and see if we wanna contact them all or just a handful of them. All right, thanks Dennis. So go ahead and schedule, or put on your schedule, Thursday, the tenth at eleven. He's gonna go back through these when he comes in and call the ones that he wants.
Okay.
I used this the last time I did. Okay, we're gonna need to call. Cause I'm starting to quarrel. Yes, Park. Dylan, can we call that Dylan?
About what?
Court engineers.
Oh, the MOU?
Cause we don't wanna, we don't wanna do it. Cat, we can go down to the property line, that's the way we're gonna do it.
You wanna call him or you want me to send, you want to send a letter or something?
That'd be fine.
Then they'd have it in writing.
Would you do that for us?
I will.
Send a letter? Do you want mine?
I have it. Well, that way it's in writing.
Yes, all right. All right.
We didn't talk about the Alice training.
Yes, quickly. I said the lake, Alice training, it's, it's something that we have done before here in the courthouse. Um, it teaches you how to be alert, react, you know, things like that. At the time, we had all four doors open when we did the Alice training. Now we're down to one door with different security. Um, it's been probably, I would say sixish years Jim, since we've done it. It's been a minute since we've done it. And Rob would like to go ahead and get something on the schedule for that. The challenge with that is, A, we have to have the third floor courtroom. Right now, they are swamped. I don't see this being something that we can do this early spring or summer. I I would think it would probably have to be pushed back.
Okay.
Because in the past, what has happened is we closed the courthouse for a couple hours, the whole court. So that all of the employees could attend at the same time. They did one, one presentation. Um, that way they could also do things in the courthouse as examples, exercises, things like that with the courthouse closed. Um, you can do that for training and stuff, so. Something that Rob would like to do again. Um, and he just wanted to put it on your radar.
Gotcha.
And so that you would understand what it was.
Okay, see, I pulled it up last night and I was looking at it. Looked like a really good thing, especially for.
It is, it is.
These day and ages.
We actually had him in twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
We put on the um, association conference for the County Clerks Association and had Rob come, it was nineteen or twenty. Had Rob come and do the Alice training for our, you know, our, or speak on it. Cause he does a really good job. Well, he brings up examples of things that you don't think of.
You don't think about them.
So he had, get back with us on a date for that.
Yeah, I'll tell him that I, you know, briefly went over it, that right now is probably not the best time with all the trials going on, that we needed to wait till the.
Yeah.
But that it is on your radar. I'll let him know.
Do we need to? LaCrisha's storage issues, do we need to have her come in and?
She's in court day.
I think we probably need her to get on the agenda when she can.
When she can get on, then we need to probably try to work her in.
Whatever works out best for her. She had an idea for her storage. She didn't really talk about it too much the other day. Yeah.
Where at?
Behind. The Justice Center, I believe.
Yes.
That's about as far deep as she went into.
That is it.
In my, um, in your Cadillac.
She did say that the rodent bridge is absolutely not secure enough and um, that uh, rodents are the biggest issue over there.
Yeah.
And Aaron confirmed that that was not a good idea because he had stuff over there that was damaged.
Yeah.
Rodent bridge in that building.
Well, what I was thinking, put it in a uh, container.
I'm not too sure if that's not what LaCrisha's kinda thinking about.
Yeah, a certain one though, but like, it almost like a climate controlled container or something. You can't.
I don't know. I don't know about one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She rattled it off by like a number.
Yeah, she called it as something.
I don't remember what it was. It didn't ring a bell with me.
I don't know what you're trying to, well, there's one out here.
I don't know how much um, secure or.
That's gonna be pricey.
I mean, yeah, you're not just gonna be able to buy a container that you can throw a padlock on.
Like I said, and if you rent one, it's still gonna be pricey.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is.
Cause about how many, he can kill one all the time, even though it can be a little rare, don't he?
Let's see, Eric was talking about how the, the mice have taken over one of the, the couch that was in.
His locker?
Yeah, it was uh, evidence.
There you go. That's the word.
Mice were stealing pieces of the couch.
It's a bridge barn over there.
It is at the bridge barn.
Over that, all they got is a door over there, go into it, underneath.
That's what LaCrisha's saying.
It's not mouse proof, that's for sure, over there, not inside it. And that, that is a secure place. That's the worst place in the world. So all you gotta do is, once you break the law, get in, you can do what you want in there. What'd they do with all those files and the old sheriffs?
That's what we're talking about.
Talking about.
Still there.
We haven't moved anything.
Cause some of those were sitting in water.
Oh, I don't know whose those are.
LaCrisha was, wasn't exactly sure. But things were getting cleaned out. I didn't know if she needed to get her stuff out faster or not, but she's like, I've gotta find a secure place. Proper place to put all her uh, records. You've got records down there.
Yeah, oh, I think we all pretty much do. I know Public Admin does. We've got coroner records down there. I mean, there's. Everybody's got stuff down there pretty much.
Yeah. So what gave us her, find out a good time to, to meet?
She was basically looking for, wanting a timeline, um, you know, how long do I have to figure, to get a solution to a problem?
So we don't exactly know.
And they're not in a hurry and Wendy said that the. Help me with what she called it.
Uh, Wendy talked about a couple different things.
The whole, the, the people that are wanting to jail. Yeah, she called it. Y'all know what I'm talking about now.
Yeah, Darren.
That um, they were still applying for their five oh one C three and they were not even close to being ready to acquire anything anyways. Um, so.
Right.
It sounds like we're okay. But LaCrisha was looking for a timeline.
I really don't know.
I said, we don't really know a timeline for anything.
I can't figure, I gotta know what she's wanting first. Wouldn't even know about that. Cause if you want a controlled building for air humidity.
Well, I don't know. I I thought she called it as something that was, it was, it was secure and. She called, she had a special one that she called it something, but I I don't remember what it was called.
Cause I've done, I say about one of them containers, if it's sealed, locked up, once it shuts, there's nothing other than a mouse getting in the way of. Put that in there. That can happen.
As long as it's, that's, I mean, as long as it's sealed up, good, I guess you would.
Yeah, you aren't gonna get nothing else, cause it doesn't leak or anything.
Yeah, I mean. That's something you need to discuss with her, but she did have an idea.
Okay, well, she needs to give us what she's thinking.
Well, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Are you guys done?
I think that's everything. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Jeffrey Charlie had something else to talk about. I'm gonna tell you, now he's gonna visit up there.